I'd like to call the Town of Clinton Planning Board virtual meeting to order at 7:31 on Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic and pursuant to executive order number 202.1 issued on March 12, 2020, suspending the open meetings law and emergency state and federal bans on large meetings or gatherings. The Town of Clinton Planning Board scheduled for January 19th, 2021 will be held electronically via Zoom instead of a public meeting open for the public to attend in person. Members of the public may view the board meeting as it is live streamed on YouTube. W dot Town of Clinton dot com slash government slash planning dash board slash planning dash board dash videos slash transcript of the meeting will be posted on the town's website at a later date. Okay, the first item on the agenda is the B C D E family LLP. Do we have anybody in the room?
They've got Doug Larson and Jacob Harden.
Okay, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Very good, very good.
Happy New Year.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
We're back.
You can, on your variance application here, can you briefly explain what you need? And then we'll discuss it.
Okay, we had prepared an application to the zoning enforcement officer. Well, he kicked us to the building inspector who sent us a denial letter because we would like to, we would like to move a shed and turn it into a pool house and build a pool. So the pool is an addition of an accessory structure. The moving of the shed, I think, is probably accessory structure neutral. But if you remember, we also wanted to demolish an A-frame, which is an accessory structure. So we are proposing to remove an accessory structure, add an accessory structure and relocate an accessory structure. So the two objections were that, one, we were moving a non-conforming use, which is the shed, to another location on the property. And there was also an objection that we were over the count of allowable accessory structures, but I'm not sure how that squares with our calculation of being neutral in the number of accessory structures. So, thank you, Arlene. So the area you can see circled in red there. At the top of the screen near the pond is the shed that we would like to move down and slightly to the west. So it looks like there's two structures there, but there's not. We would like to move the one at the top down to the left and then put a pool in front of it. And oh, that's the A-frame, I'm sorry. This is the existing conditions. So there's the shed and the A-frame. So then we need to go to the next slide. Could you go to the next, oh, go to another page, keep going. Okay, back, back up a slide. No, one more. Oh, I'm sorry, I think we're going the wrong direction.
Yeah.
Oh, there's the A-frame. Like to demolish, right? That's the A-frame we've already demolished. Can you go back to sheet five, please, page five? There's the shed we'd like to relocate and repurpose as a pool house. Keep going back.
Back or?
Back, please. No, you're going to, you're going up to.
Oh, sorry, down.
Yeah, I need to go back. Now you're on nine. I need to go back to page four or five.
Page five is the existing shed that we're proposing to relocate. And on page six is the A-frame that we are demolishing.
Am I pulling the right one? Because you, you send me different stuff, hold on.
That's tough. It's, it's, it's. Go back up one more to number five, five of 12.
Oh, right. I'm sorry, A5, which is page six. Arlene was on the correct page. You do have the correct set, the latest set.
A5, A6.
Right there. That's the, this is the existing shed that we are proposing to relocate. And the opposite, and the, and there's a section that the zoning officer pointed out that you can't relocate a non-conforming use to another part of the property. And the non-conforming use comes into play because we're non-conforming on the number of structures.
I think we should show the proposed plan. Jacob, with the pool and the two, and the relocated shed.
That is sheet A10, which is page 11. So A10, there we go, one more. Just previous.
This is the last one, oh, on the A10, okay.
Yeah, A10.
Can you enlarge the left-hand screen with the red bubble around it? Thank you, Arlene.
Oh, oh, hold on. Now I lost it, pardon me.
Okay. All right, I think we, we have the idea, we know what the, we know what the problem is here. Just to let you know, the variance is a two-step process. The planning board will give a positive, negative, or no recommendation to the zoning board, and they will make the final decision on the variance. And let's see, that's, that's, Justin? What have you got for us?
So there's three variances here that all basically derive out of the fact that the original property had eight accessory structures on it. Depending on how you do the math, right, right? We have a question of does the pool house and the pool count as two, or are they one? Or when are you doing the math? Like, since they already demolished them, are they down to seven? And so now if you added another one to eight, or can you count it as net? I don't really know the answer, I don't know that I care. But essentially, right, they had eight to begin with. They've lost one, which brings you down to seven. They're relocating another one of those structures, and then they're building the pool. So you're either adding on the pool, which gets you up to a net of eight, so a net zero, you know, zero net gain or loss of accessory structures, or the pool and the pool house are combined, in which case you have a net decrease in accessory structures. But variance one is, is just the fact that any new building, right, is going to be over the three-building limit. So that was the first one in the letter. The second one is that since, as I think Jacob said, since you have more than the three structures, any movement to the, any of these existing eight is non-conforming, you're moving a non-conforming building. So you need a variance to move an existing structure over three. And then lastly, the last piece of variance is that anything being altered has to conform with circular, right, back to the only, there being three buildings. So really, in my mind, it all derives out of the fact that there's more than three buildings. We've kind of been over this a number of times with the wetland application. The building that's being moved is the one by the lake that is going to be moved out of the wetlands buffer, you know, to where that other A-frame building is, and the pool gets built. That work is outside of the wetlands buffer. I don't know what else, what else there is to, to go over. I don't know what our, what our view is on moving or, you know, improving structures when they're over, you know, a grandfathered limit of three.
What was this? When originally, was this a farm?
This was originally a farm, yes.
It was a farm. Do you know when these structures were built? All the, I mean, there's, we have eight structures, let's go with eight, just for the sake of clarity here.
Well, they all, most of them date from the 1800s.
Okay, was it, were they built when this was a farm? Or any more recent?
Some of them were built when it was a camp. It was a camp after it was a farm.
Okay.
It was a camp for many, many years.
The latest structure, well, there's, there's two to this. The A-frame is one of the later structures, which is a 1960 structure. But the garage was a older, the garage as the apartment above was an older structure, possibly from the 18, late 1800s, that was rebuilt in the 90s. And there was a building permit issued for that. And that would have been the latest, but that was building an existing structure.
Yeah, it was a barn, and it was rebuilt as a garage with an apartment. And we do have the building department paperwork on that structure.
Okay, do we, do we have any comments from the board? Does anybody have any opinions on this?
It's Paul. I, I, I don't think the second and third categories of variances are, I mean, I don't know if we can overrule this, CEO, but I don't think they're needed. The use, the use issue is not applicable. The shed isn't non-conforming because of its use. It's just non-conforming because of the number of buildings. And the use is not, you know, that section pertains to uses. So if this were being used as a, you know, a oil refinery or something, you know what I mean? It's non-conforming use, but that shed is just a shed. So moving it is not an issue. And as Justin said, it's net neutral to move it. And then the last thing, non-conforming buildings or structures. It says you can, you know, make alterations and extensions of them as long as they conform with the zoning. And maybe he's referring to the fact, you know, the putting water into the building, which there's a ruling on that that says if it's a pool house, you know, it can have water in it. And this is going to be a pool house. So I agree with Justin's analysis, you're actually net negative one structure when this is all said and done, which seems like a better situation than we have now. Because it's one structure, you know, pool and pool house, and you're losing the A-frame. So you're net, you're net, you're down one structure. I just don't see how the other two, I see the first one, I understand, because you're adding the pool, and it's a new structure, but I don't see why they need the other two. But, you know, I would be positive on this just because you're net negative one structure. Or at least neutral.
I agree with Paul. I think it, I, I think that's exactly how I see it, too.
Anybody else want to chime in here?
I feel, I'm, I'm positive because you're, you're not only going, I think, net down one, but you're also getting that structure out of the wetlands buffer.
Right. And my view on this is that a lot, apparently, a lot of these structures were built, one when it was a farm, when it was a camp, pre-zoning. You know, I, I have a positive reaction to this, as, you know, Paul and Justin have on this. And it is a one negative, as I see it. So that's, that's just my opinion on it.
So what is the planned use for this property? You say it was a camp, so is that going to continue to be a camp? Or what's planned use?
No, it's a, it's a single-family residence.
The, the camp closed in 1972.
It's been used as a residence since the camp closed. It was just rented out.
Yeah, the use has been discontinued. It's gone.
The camp use has been discontinued, right?
Yeah, there's, there are no plans to open this as a camp or anything of that nature.
No, it's, we're renovating the house for a gentleman and his wife. They have two children who are starting families. So we're, it's a family, family property.
Okay. We don't have, Justin, do you have something on this?
Sure, I'll say it as positive unless anyone wants to object. But resolution, the Town of Clinton Planning Board making a positive recommendation to the zoning board of appeals on the requested variances to section 25022, 25081, and 25083 regarding accessory structures requested by B C D E family LP property located at 191 to 195 East Meadow Brook Lane in the Town of Clinton, parcel number, and AR3 zoning district. Whereas the applicant is requesting variances to demolish existing A-frame accessory dwelling, construct a new pool at said A-frame location, relocate and convert an existing shed into a pool house with a bath and wet bar. The property is an 80, an 80-acre lot in AR3 zoning district. The property is not within the bridge line scenic and historic protection overlay district. The property is not in the CEA. The variances requested are substantial, as the property currently has eight accessory structures, which is over the limit of three in the town code. However, if the variances are granted, there will be no net increase in the number of accessory dwellings currently on the property, sorry, accessory structures currently on the property. An undesirable change will not be produced in the character of the neighborhood or be detrimental to nearby properties, as the accessory structure will not be visible from the road or neighboring properties. The planning board has previously reviewed this proposal in connection with the owner's application for a wetlands permit. And after secret review, granted the wetlands permit in order to demolish the A-frame house and move the shed out of the wetlands buffer to a proposed location to be converted to a pool house. Benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method. The proposed variant should not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood. The alleged difficulty is self-created, but should not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. Since now therefore be resolved, the planning board is making a positive recommendation for the approval of this requested variance to the Clinton ZBA.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
I.
Aren't I?
Sarah, I.
Very, I, Paul.
Okay. So moved. Okay, guys, your next step is the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you much.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
Bye.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Del Forno area variance. Is anybody here in the room for that?
Unmute. You have to unmute, Ed, you better check your screen, unmute.
Thank you, Arlene. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, yes, I'm here.
Okay. And your name, please? Can't hear you.
Edward Del Forno.
Okay. This is a two-step process. The planning board will review your application and give a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals, either yea, nay, or a neutral recommendation. And they will make the final decision on your application.
Okay.
Okay, so can you briefly tell us what you're doing here?
Yes, I would like to obtain a building permit and a variance to complete a one-story 14-by-24 shed slash garage with 40 square feet of storage. Total square feet of the unit would be 376 square feet with no electric, no plumbing, no heat, no insulation. And I'm asking for a reduction from the 50-foot setback to approximately 27 feet. And reason being is, if I, if I place it in that, my property is very steep and very tall trees, over 100 feet tall, and it's basically the only place I have to put it. And my, my house has a two-story garage, which is adjacent to that. If I put it closer to the two-story garage, that's where my entrance and exit is currently. It doesn't leave me enough room for my, my vehicles, my snowplow, and for oil trucks and delivery vehicles to have room to turn around.
Okay. Okay, Jack? We got Jack here?
Jack.
The same problem, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, the file on this includes a violation notice for construction without a building permit. What can you tell us about that?
I didn't realize at the time that I started constructing, I, I didn't know that I needed a permit for a building that was so small. That was my error. I apologize for that. I was given the stop-work order, and since then, I have not done any work whatsoever.
We got a, Arlene just forwarded it to us. Looks like an email from Nancy White, is that your neighbor?
Yes, that's the neighbor that owns the 2.49 acre parcel.
Yes, saying that she thinks work was done after the stop-work order.
That's not correct, and you can, John Fenton was here, and I believe he walked all around. And since then, the only thing that I did request from John, and he gave me an email to that effect, was he was allowing me to install what I call hurricane ties on the rafters, just because it gets very windy up here. And I did put in some of those, but no other work was completed since the stop-work order was issued.
I, I drove over and took a look at the property, there was no one there at the time, but there's a sign at the entrance that says, "You're a licensed real estate broker", is that so?
That is correct.
And you didn't know that a building permit would be required for a 376-square-foot building?
Not, no, no, I did not.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, I mean, the neighbor's obviously unhappy about this. And there's some kind of a structure on their side of the line. I don't know whether it's 50 feet or not, I didn't check it.
Oh, so you did see their structure?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, I'm glad to hear that.
Is it a cottage, or it looks like a cottage of some sort?
I believe he uses it as an art studio. I don't know for sure. I know there's electric in there. I don't know if there's any water in there or not. I know there's heat and electric.
I mean, I couldn't tell whether that was 50 feet or not, frankly, it looked like it might be.
It looks like it's on my property, doesn't it?
No.
Oh, okay.
There's a wall.
Yeah, that wall is kind of, it's been disintegrated there ever since I moved in, it's been taken apart there at that section, if you were to walk down there.
Well. It's this gap, look at the screen.
I'm sorry?
Look at the screen.
Yeah, I see it. It, it's, it does, it, it, it doesn't show on, on the photo, unless it's, if you move your cursor a little to the left, that may be it.
My, the, the structure.
I, yeah, there, I think that's it.
No, no.
If, if, the problem I've got is that because this was done without a permit, without coming to us for a variance first, and it, it's pretty far along, it's, you know, it's framed out, it's got walls. If, if the ZBA doesn't want to give the variance, then it puts everybody in a difficult situation.
So, you know, I know the complaint that my neighbor has is that she see a portion of it this time of year through the trees. When it's summertime, she's not going to be able to see it all. Right now, she can probably only see 10% of it, although I have to look at her structure, as you saw, 100% of the time. The other thing is, besides them not, they're not going to be able to see it when the leaves are on the trees, they can barely see it now. The other thing is, they're, they have two other homes. They spend the summers in Maine, they spend the other one in New York City, they're rarely here. I couldn't, I couldn't understand that, you know, I, I don't, I don't understand their rationale, why they're so upset, or something, that if you see these trees here on the parking line, they're bare now, but those trees are all maples and ain't the trees on them, they're not going to be able to see it once the leaves are on the trees. And if they're concerned of being, being to see it, to see the structure, I look at their structure when, when I'm in my yard, I see their, I mean, people see, I see theirs 100% all the time, that's their complaint.
I, I, I understand that. It, it's also visible from the road, isn't it?
Only if, if you go down to the road, there's maybe, maybe 10 feet where you might see the peak of the roof. The house and the structure is not visible from the road. There's a, there's a parcel in the back.
I drove by it, it's, it is visible.
You can see it, if you're driving down a road, there's about 10, if you look it up, you can see the roof peak, you can't see the whole structure.
All right. I.
It goes up a hill.
I, I'd be curious as to the views of everybody else on, on the board.
Well, I, I'm glad you asked that, because Cassel is a neighbor that's on the southern end, they're on 20.65 acres, there's no way that they, there's nowhere, it's down on the bottom of the screen, on the back of me, which quarters half of my property is 50 acres that Crempa owns with no structure on it whatsoever. And then past that, across the road, there's 50 acres. And on the other side of me, which you can't see any time of year, is not bordering my property, because Crempa owns a 40-foot piece along the top of the screen there. You can't see anything, you know? I, I can't believe that the site of the building is their major complaint.
I, I, I don't know what, what's in their mind. I, I just know that we have a situation where somebody has gone forward without a building permit and, and done quite a lot of work. And I, you know, and it, it limits what the ZBA can do here. I, I would be curious as to the views of the other people on the planning board.
My. Yes.
My own thought is that I, I don't see how we can make a, a positive recommendation and tie the board's hands even further on this if they are unhappy about the, the violation. So to me, it's a choice between a, a neutral or a negative, but I would, you know, be curious as to what other folks think.
Do we have any comments from anybody on the board?
Is there, is there nowhere else? This is Sarah Love. Is there nowhere else on the property to put this structure?
There's not, because if you look at the satellite view, those tall trees are about over 125 feet tall. And then besides that, there's only a portion of plateau at the top, it's a very steep hill going up, and it's a steep hill going down. There, there's no other, I, I mean, you know, if I wanted to spend, you know, $100,000 and bulldoze and take trees down, I guess anything is possible, but it's not realistically possible.
So, I mean. I mean. And this is purely for parking your vehicles in?
Yes, I was going to pull in either my pickup truck or my tractor.
This is a second garage?
I have, I have two, I have three vehicles and then a tractor. So I have two cars and two car garage. I have my pickup truck that I keep outside right now and I have my tractor that I keep outside.
The existing garage is attached to the house, right?
That is correct.
I thought so.
Go and see this and and you know if the work continued from. We don't have a picture in our packet of the angle that we were emailed today to see. New or not.
I I don't know. I just saw the um. I was there, what, Saturday, I guess. So uh whatever was done was done by then, so I I just don't know.
Hold on, I'm pulling it up.
Okay, thank you.
Can you see it? Email from the neighbor, the latest. This is the email that came in.
Okay, so if you were to check with John Fenton, he walked around that structure, um, I didn't, when was that? Couple of weeks ago. He, a week and a half ago, he would verify that's where it was. Since he left, there has been not one piece of wood put up. The only piece of wood that was put up is one two by six for a a brace, which I did ask for permission for to do just to. Uh, make it secure from the wind. And I do have an email to that effect.
Are are you doing this work yourself or you have a contractor?
I was doing it myself with my son and my wife. And my tractor.
Anybody else have any comments on this?
Is that it? I just feel like we exist to prevent these kind of neighbor disputes so that you can. Make these proposals, have the neighbors weigh in, come to a resolution before anyone is out any money or work. And right, even in some scenarios where people don't realize they need a permit, if the neighbor's okay with it. And we kind of, you know, are okay to grant it in in reverse, but this is the first time I've seen where. They went forward on the permit and now the neighbor is not happy with it. And I feel like if we just, you know, let it go on, we're kind of endorsing this behavior and then people are gonna say, oh, I should just build first and ask for. You know, forgiveness later. And I just think I I'm worried about the precedent that that sets. Even if if this was done in advance, we might have gotten to to where we said, yes, you know, this is the only place it can go and and. And this is what's fair and we'll live with it, but it didn't happen here and I I feel, I it makes me nervous.
Paul, anything?
Is there anything that, is there anything that could be done to, you know, screen the building off from the neighbor?
Yes, of of course. Well, as I mentioned, in in the in the time, summer, spring and and until the leaves fall. That building is not going to be at all visible from my neighbor's house. In the meantime, um, you know, I don't mind planting some uh pine trees that don't lose their needles. Um, I don't know what else. I mean, that's, it's a good suggestion and I don't have a problem with that.
I agree with all the other, so thank you, thank you for that. I um. I agree with all the other comments about the how this got here and and the problems with it. So I don't see it as a positive. I mean, I see it as neutral or negative, so I I just. I'm just, I'm conceptually thinking, how would we feel about it if it was not this way, but it was just a proposal? And not not an actual building, you know, would we approve it or not? I I don't know. Maybe it's just, maybe we shouldn't even get into hypotheticals, but um.
I think we'd ask about screening.
Yeah, we'd ask about screening and maybe about re, maybe, you know, is there any way of moving it a little bit or something? Yeah. So um. I I'm with everybody else, but I think we should put a note in, you know, that if this is approved that. You know, we think it should be screened from the neighborhood property to the fullest extent possible.
And would they give me some type of um of screening that would be satisfactory, whether it be. Uh, I mean, I I suggested pine trees because in the wintertime, they're not going to lose their needles and they're still going to block the view.
Yeah, I mean, it could be. Given the height of the, that might be the best thing. I mean, I I. But the ZBA will?
How many feet is it?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
How many feet is it from the property line? I'm missing that.
Twenty-three from the side.
What's this, what's the offset? Yeah.
I think it's twenty-three feet.
Yeah, it's it's, they need a twenty-three foot variance. It's. It's twenty-seven feet from the side yard. It should be fifty.
Yes, correct.
And there's no way that the building could have been put the other direction.
Well, it could have been put there, but if I put it there, then I can't make the turn. My truck is twenty-four feet long. My pickup truck with the plow, not including a sander. If I put it closer to my house, then when when I come in, see, see there, there you go. There there's my pickup truck and there's. There's um, there's another truck. So if I put it forward. Twenty-four feet with, and then there's no room to plow the snow. There's no room for me to maneuver. I can hardly get into my garage if I if I move it forward.
Right, but I mean.
It 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 could have been somewhat closer, if even if not fully fifty. I I don't. I don't know. I I drafted something with a neutral recommendation. Cause I I think that that's as frankly as charitable as I would feel about this.
I appreciate that, Mr.
I think the zoning board. Uh, I don't know what their reaction to this is. My reaction and and going ahead with a building of this size without a permit. Puts me in a very negative stance on this. Um, but the the board will uh. We have six other folks here who are gonna vote on this. So um. Jack, if you have a resolution, uh.
I I I do.
And then we can discuss whether it's gonna be neutral or negative.
Okay, uh whereas applicants Edward and Donna Marie Del Forno. Seek a recommendation from the town of Clinton Planning Board pursuant to section two fifty dash ninety-five E. For an area variance regarding a proposed shed slash garage on the eight point one eight acre property. At one thirty-seven Schultzville Road in the town of Clinton, long number, an applicant states the proposed structure. Will be fourteen by twenty-four feet. And that including a forty-foot, forty-square-foot storage area will have a total area of. Three hundred and seventy-six square feet. Applicants seek a variance because the structure is located only twenty-seven feet from the side of the property. The minimum side setback is fifty feet unless applicants seek an area variance of twenty-three feet. Uh, but can state they have only a minimal amount of level ground on which the garage. Can be constructed, given the steep hill and shale ledge on other parts of their property. And that without the area variance, trucks and emergency vehi- vehicles. Would not be able to turn around if the shed were built elsewhere. Buying the factors for an area that variance set out in section two fifty. Ninety-eight, excuse me, ninety-eight D. Structure will not cause a change to the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. There is a structure of similar size on the adjoining property. And near the proposed shed garage, applicants state their structure will be landscaped. The benefit sought cannot be achieved by other means, given the relatively small amount of level ground in proximity to the driveway on the property. The proposed variance will not have an adverse impact on the physical. Or environmental condition in the neighborhood, although the structure will be visible. From Schultzville Road, there is, as indicated, a similar-sized structure. Located next to it on the adjoining property. On the other hand, the proposed garage will be visible. From and located near to the neighbor's structure. Uh, and the variance sought is substantial. Uh, and the difficulty is self-created. There is a, however, a problem with this application. It was filed only after the zoning enforcement officer issued a violation because no building permit had been granted. At that time, construction was well underway and appears the building was already framed out and sided. Applicants state. That they did not know a permit was required for a building of this size. Although applicant Ed Del Forno is a licensed real estate broker. Because the role of the planning board regarding area variances is limited. To make him, making a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. And the planning board does not wish to limit any actions the ZBA. May or may not choose to make with regard to the fact that construction had advanced. To a considerable degree without seeking a building permit. Now therefore be it resolved, the town of Clinton Planning Board makes a blank recommendation. With regard uh to applicants' requests for an area variance, permit them to complete construction. Of a proposed shed garage that would have a minimum side setback of twenty-seven feet. Uh, instead of the required fifty, although if the planning board recommends. Uh, that it be approved, although planning board recommends. That if the ZBA does approve the application, that it be conditioned. Upon uh evergreens or other year-round vegetations uh being planted.
Say something um on building department wise? So the foundation hasn't been checked because it was spored, so there's no way for us to even. Check the foundation and the structure of this building.
Well, Arlene, that that's true. However, if you look at the side, I think they require a four-inch slab. Or a cord slab, is it four inches? Because I poured, I poured six inches. That's evident from the side on top of five inches of.
We're just telling you that it did not go to the periodic inspection of.
I understand that.
Inspector even said that.
Yes, yes.
Okay, uh, discussion?
I could go either way on this one, um, neutral or or negative. Um, I, you know, it's why the the ZBA gets paid the big bucks and they'll have um. A a public hearing at which I assume the the neighbors will have the opportunity to uh raise their objections.
I'm in, I'm inclined to go with neutral. Because I feel like if this was originally brought to us without being built. We'd be inclined to do it, but I certainly understand. Everybody's point that maybe it could be closer, maybe there was another spot. But just looking at the property and how it's got this plateau thing going on. I I understand that we probably would have done a a positive if they'd come to us first.
Thank you, Tracy. I I I understand.
We're, we're discussing a motion, so if you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we've gotta do this, okay? That's all right.
It's Paul, I I I agree with what Tracy said. I I would be, I would, I I agree with everything Tracy said, so. I'm going to neutral.
Okay, uh, on the, on the resolution, Jack, uh, where you said the planting of. Evergreens or whatever. Uh, could we like add uh for purposes of screening the uh screening? Uh, from the neighbor's property?
Yep, that's a goo- good thing.
So we would add uh. As as I can see, people are looking at a neutral recommendation. Can we add neutral to the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, and then we can uh. So the resolution says neutral, we're adding the screening.
And then can we, can we add that the screening uh be uh mature enough to abstract the view immediately?
Good.
That's good. Thank you, sir.
That would, that would uh. That would require an awfully expensive bunch of evergreens. Yeah, I I don't know, um.
Well, that's our rec, that's gonna be our recommendation to. They will make the final decision on.
Understood, I'm sorry, I chimed in.
Yeah. We're not saying that it has to be done. The zoning board will make that final decision.
Understood.
On this, okay? Okay, um, any other discussion on the motion?
It's Justin here?
I I'm sorry, Arlene, I can't hear you.
Justin is missing.
He's here.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Very eye.
Okay. Okay.
Jack, are you eye?
I'm an eye, yeah.
Okay, uh, so moved. Okay, your next step is uh to go before the zoning board of appeals.
Um, I'm not, may I ask how that process worked and?
Arlene, Arlene will give you all the details.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a lot line adjustment for lack and. Winnaker, is that the proper, am I pronouncing that correctly?
Jack, you gotta unmute.
I am. Mark is also here as well, Arlene. He's trying to get in. I believe you've just let him in.
Okay, you're here.
Excellent.
Okay, uh, so you have, you have two things up. We're gonna hit the uh. The lot line adjustment first and then the uh soil erosion and sediment control plan. Next, okay?
Okay.
So uh. Okay, if you can just briefly explain the lot line adjustment, please.
So, Arlene, are you gonna put the drawing?
Yeah, I'm gonna put it up, sorry. I lost my screen.
So for those of you don't know me, I'm Seth Stickle. I work with Mark Graminsky. Um, uh, this uh uh project is uh two lots. Um, the two lots are now owned. And Rachel Winnaker, the owner applicants, uh, we're proposing, as you said, the lot line alteration and the soil erosion set up control. We will start with the lot line adjustment. Uh, when we had previously spoke uh in the summer, um, we had discussed uh that the client was interested in purchasing the adjoining parcel. Uh, since that time, the client has gone through with that purchase and uh has purchased the adjoining lot. Uh, the uh westerly most lot is a ten point five five acre lot. Which is a flag lot running from uh nine G along uh Coyote Ridge Road. Uh, almost back to Brown's Pond. The easterly lot is a five point five seven acre. Uh, parcel which is located uh adjacent to Brown's Pond. Both parcels have right-of-way access along Coyote Ridge, which is a private road. The proposal for the lot line adjustment uh came about when we were working with both the client. And the architects on how to best develop the property for what their development goals were. Uh, the clients were looking to uh build a a primary residence of four bedrooms and they were also looking to. Uh, build a a pool house, guest house uh with two bedrooms. Um, based on looking at the parcels that they have, uh, that they had chosen. Based on looking at the parcels that they have, that they had chosen to purchase and how to best accommodate their improvements, we've decided that a lot line adjustment would be the best method for that. Arlene, if you go just down one more page, we'll see, I believe, the the first sheet, which is the lot line adjustment sheet. There it is. We are proposing that the most westerly portion, just over, if you could just zoom towards the right side of the screen, right about where your cursor was. If you could just zoom into there, that would be great. We are proposing essentially a swap of land between the two parcels. The swap of land coming from the easterly parcel along Brown's Pond Road is one point zero two two acres that will be come part and parcel of the westerly lot. And similarly, a one point four three five acre parcel, portion of the westerly lot will now become part of the easterly lot. Both lots, once they, the lot line alteration has been completed, will be conforming lots, the easterly lot will be a five point nine six nine acre parcel with a slight increase. And the westerly lot will be a ten point two four three acre parcel. Again, the lot line alteration is proposed to accommodate improvements, which we'll get into a little bit more detail when we talk about the soil erosion and sediment control permit. But that is our current proposal for the lot line adjustment.
Hey, Paul?
So you know, there's nothing, there's nothing objectionable about this proposal, but I would suggest that we look at the the full development plan. I think I think everything that they're asking for has to be done kind of in in coordination, if you will. So, you know, I think it may be helpful to the board to see what the development plan looks like and how the how the structures are gonna be arranged before I give you my comments.
The original plaque? Which one? I sent you all the final.
What they're proposing, with the 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 this. With all the. Because.
Sheet, that is, that is shown on our next, we submitted this as a complete package with both and.
Yeah, it's got both, it's got both. I think I think what I think for this, for the soil erosion, the 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 the. Thank you. I think that that we need to cert- so this is the, maybe maybe you could just go through the, you know, description of what's going on and then I can give comments, yeah.
Certainly, if you could just scroll down just a little bit in that photo so that we could see the northern boundary just a bit, Arlene?
The same page?
The same page, yet just wanna see a little bit more of the northern portion of the property. Perfect.
Right there.
That's great. So at the center, the very center of the screen, just south of the Lack Winnaker label, you'll see that it says previous division line to be removed. That's the existing property line. Right straight in the center, just to the left of the Coon label. It's it's in that, it's in that area. And the adjustment to that is shown at the Y of the driveway is where the new proposed line is. This line was selected for multiple reasons to accommodate the proposed buildings. One was for sanitary requirements, for setbacks, for our proposed sanitary disposal locations. And the other was the ability to easily provide individual driveways from what will be a common driveway leading to both of these as they will be to individual, single-family residential lots. The eastern portion, let's let's just go back just a little bit, there's an existing access which is just south of this image here. Which is very close to the boundary of the Coon property. You're you're right there, that's perfect, Arlene, thank you. And and that existing access is an old wood road, and there was some development that was done here previously. Some clearing and some other land improvements by a previous owner. When our client had approached us to look into developing the parcel, one of the things that they wanted to do was provide a little bit more screening and privacy to their parcel relative to the adjoining neighbor. So what we've done here is is proposed a common driveway for these two lots, which will be relocated just to the west, northwest, along Coyote Ridge Road. And that new common driveway will come into the property along the ridge line and then split to at the Y. If we take a right at the Y, we're headed towards the main development, that will be the the main house, it's four bedrooms. And the improvements are are shown. Parking area, a garage, and then the main structure. The the at the Y, if we were to continue to the north, you'll be headed towards the guest house, the guest house is a supposed two-bedroom house with a pool. And each of them will have their own individual sanitary disposal systems and water supply wells. And for the most part, that is the the proposed development plan. Was that what you were looking for, Paul?
Yeah, that's good, thank you. And so and and the dash, the the dashed area, the that area is wetland, isn't it? This sort of hourglass shaped thing.
It is, that is a an Army Corps of Engineers wetland.
And there's a creek, I think Crumelvo Creek goes through here somewhere along the road for part of the way, anyway, so 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 my my general comments are that the, you know, the board is being asked to approve a soil erosion and sediment control plan. And I can't speak for anybody else on the board, but soil erosion is not one of my specialties, so you know, what we would, I think, we we've had one or two of these and we've we've referred them to Pizza Taro for engineering comments, and I think given the scale of this project, we would definitely want to do that. And also, can you just leave the, Arlene, can you leave the drawing up?
Yeah, hold on.
Okay. You know, we could, on the on the soil erosion issue, we could, you know, declare lead agency and circulate it. You know, I think we'd want to circulate it to the CAC, the New York D E C, and I guess Douglas County Soil and Water. You know, because there's some sensitive areas, you know, around this these parcels. So, you know, we could do that tonight, get that process going and 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 my suggestion to the applicants would be, you know, they might want to wait on the lot line, which can be done in one night typically. You know, until those comments have come back to make sure there's no issues with the proposed development plan before the lot line is finalized. The other thing, though, I and and one one question I do have that maybe Pete would be able to help us with is whether this will also require approval under the wetlands, wetlands permit under local town law, I assume he will tell us what, you know, any other permits that state or federal permits that they might need, if any. But I just, the proposed driveway, if we could go back to the other drawing, it might help, but.
Drawing, which one?
The development, with the driveways and the septics and and because I think the driveway, it looks like it comes close to the to the creek there, but I, you know, I couldn't tell for sure. The the one the one conceptual issue when we get the drawing back for Mark and Seth. Okay, so you know, when you, when I looked at this, my first reaction, given these are under common ownership and it's one integrated, you know, plan, is why this isn't a, rather than a lot line, isn't just a merger of these two parcels. Maybe that, maybe you, if you want to comment on that, because, well, maybe if you want to comment on that, then I can tell you what my my concern is. Why why you wouldn't just merge these two and you have one one parcel?
Certainly, when we had originally discussed this with the board, that was our our initial approach, was a discussion about consolidation of lots. No, no, but what we what we have come to in working with the client and working with the architect is that they would like to accommodate a building that's a more comfortable size for second, for the second building. And when we would do a consolidation, there are some restrictions that would limit the building development size, so that's that's why we have gone this route.
So what would require rapid, so not only to the planning board, app- application to the ZBA, Paul? Or I guess, you know, for size of that structure, right? For size of the, would be the, you know, the guest house of, you know, where the pool is, right? And so wouldn't that also, I and I think we had the discussion of whether or not that's located in the front yard? If if.
No.
Yeah, I remember this now.
Okay, but.
Because nine G might be considered the frontage as opposed to road, which is the private.
Yeah, but that, it wouldn't apply, this, that wouldn't apply to this.
Okay.
What, I mean, what, how big would this structure be? I I mean, because I'm thinking if it's partly a pool house, maybe that square footage, the pool house square footage wouldn't apply to the living space, you know what I'm saying? You could, in other words, you could have, let's say you had fifteen hundred square feet, five hundred square feet is pool house.
Two bedrooms is gonna be bigger.
I mean, it might be, but I just, you know, you are allowed two bedrooms under the, under the zoning law, but it just, I don't know, you know. I don't I don't know what they had in mind. The issue, the issue, so the reason I raise the issue is, if if it's gonna be two parcels, I think the planning board has to deal with it as two parcels, and even though it's under common ownership now, eventually, at some point, it might not be, so what you would end up with is a structure on on the pool, the pool house structure parcel is 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 landlocked by, you know, it has access through an easement on another property, which is something we're not supposed to have on a flag light, we just went through this on Will Lane.
Okay.
You would have, you know, access through this easement exclusively. I suppose if we, if you could mock up an an alternative way of making, getting access in there, it looks kind of difficult.
It is.
Because I think, looking at the old drawings, the way this was originally subdivided, the the house was gonna be off of Coyote Ridge Road.
Correct.
Closer to the road on the.
Yes. Yeah, and when you look at this plan, you look at where the wetland is, it would be to the, you know, to the southwest of that, right? That's, that's the only other location. That's the only way you could, that's, that's the only accessible, you know, of course, without corrupt, without, in this case, you probably, you'd have to span the wetlands, and then it's, and then it's really, you know, it's, it's, it's too steep. And, you know, once, once you did that, it would be too steep to get to the location where we're showing the structure now, couldn't do it. Or, well, it'd be very difficult.
I I just, from a planning perspective, and also, I do think the zoning law might actually preclude this, but you know, it's, you you have a lot, you have potentially have a lot, you know, maybe, maybe the attitude is, well, if somebody buys it, it's their problem, but you potentially have a a parcel that, with a house on it and a pool and every, and improvements that they can't access. If if there's some issue with this other owner, you know, that's my only issue from a planning perspective, it's not the greatest arrangement.
Okay.
If it's not, you know, if the lots aren't merged.
So then it would be, so then do we, then we would continue or go back to the zoning administrator and speak to the zoning administrator to see where this falls, if if it, if they were, if this is a single parcel?
Well, do you have any idea how big they they want this pool house to be? I mean, is it really, is it gonna be? Well, yeah, I mean, that that's actually not a bad idea, if, in other words, if it's a hybrid of, you know, it's partly a you know, recreational space for the pool and partly a living space, you know, what, how does that break down and what does he, how does he interpret the the zoning law when it comes to that?
Okay.
That might be the solution.
And then also, and so you don't think, and because I I thought was also the front yard, I thought it would be an area variance for.
If that were the only, if if that is in fact an issue, I'm not sure why it would be, but you would, I can't imagine that you wouldn't get that, because it's it's not it's it's not, this is not a typical situation of, it's not even anywhere near the road, it's not, it's like, it's a technical issue.
Right, okay.
That were the only impediment, I can't believe that would be, this, I, you know, that would be something, it seemed to be a minor issue.
Okay.
I think the size of the building is gonna be the real issue.
Okay.
But you don't know.
Paul?
What?
Can you get a variance with the size of the building?
You could, I just don't know, you know, if it's two thousand square feet, I, you know, that would be pushing it, right? I mean, if it were, you know, eleven hundred square, maybe, you know, maybe they would get, you know, twelve hundred, maybe they would get it.
So you're saying that they could maybe apportion part of it to being the pool house?
That's what I, I'm I'm I if the Z, if the zoning administrator, you know, agreed with that, I would think that would be I I think that's better than having two different parcels with an easement and a, you know. I I mean, I I would think if that's possible, yeah, and if it's, if he says, well, you need a variance, you know, what kind of variance are we talking about? Is it a my, is it not, you know, not a particularly, you know, significant one, you know, may maybe that's the way to go.
Okay.
But if.
Creating a non, a a landlot.
Well, the board, if the board thinks, I mean, I I was just flagging the issue for the board, if the board isn't concerned about it, then, you know, then then I, you know, I can, I I, the way I read the the provisions for rear lots is that you can't have access through, it has to be access through the lot itself. Not through, you know, not through an easement, but that was, remember, we had Will Lane where they.
I remember that one, yeah.
And and, yeah, and I mean, and you can, I think what, I think you can have the access through a common driveway, but there has to be a way of getting in, you know, that.
Yeah, you're just not able to have another driveway put in all the way up there, right?
Doesn't.
It's very steep.
It looks like, right, Mark, you could, you guys, you couldn't get another driveway in there, right?
It's a very steep slope to come up, you know, in that in that one area, and then spanning the wetlands, it just would be, nothing's impossible, it would be very, very complex.
You know, you'd have to span the wetland and it's such a steep slope to come up. Very, very difficult to do, not practical, let's, let's just put it that way.
But on on other things, we have just said, if you could do it, putting cost aside, that we accepted that.
So we may be able to show you a conceptual alternative for a driveway.
Well, yeah, I think with other, I think in other situations, there have been times when the driveway was going to be really expensive if they had to put it in, but they could show that they could put it in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, then, the lot line adjustment itself, I mean, it, you can see there potentially you could get another driveway to the main house, so why not leave the lot line so that the driveway is on the other parcel? You know what I'm saying? I mean, because there is the old, you said there's an old wood road that comes up to the main house, you can see it drawn in.
Yes.
Right.
So, so technically, there is access to the main house with another driveway. So why not leave the pool house with the existing?
I see what you're saying, you're saying have the pool house keep the, keep that that piece.
That driveway, yeah.
And then it's, then the driveway is actually on the pool house parcel.
Correct. So then it would be the main house that had to show the other driveway.
That's a.
Correct. That would be good.
It's not a bad idea. It's a good idea.
Septics as well.
But you didn't, yeah. Okay, well, that's another, right.
I mean, I don't know about the feasibility, but I'm just throwing it out there.
Talking about running a property like this.
Yeah, so for to make the lots five acres, which is the.
Right, that's the.
We would be removing a larger section here. And we have done this pretty substantial deep testing and, you know, soils testing for septic systems. And the only viable locations on the site are the ones shown as chosen, there's a lot of rock out here. And so the the viable sanitary disposal locations are shown, we need to maintain, we would need to make those on their individual lots as well, so it it is possible to take a look at reconfiguring that line, but there, those are just some of the things that we thought about. And that's why we've placed it where it is now. The clients have also shown some desire to have. And that's why we've placed it where it is now. Um, the clients have also shown some desire to have. Um, you know, two separate parcels, um, as opposed to a combined parcel.
Yeah, but if you, but if you just came up that dotted line. Until it meets where the two driveways split off and then hang your right in the property line you've already proposed.
Um, we'll have to, to look at what the area does to the east, the most easterly port, uh, parcel.
Correct.
We're, we're right now at five point nine six nine acres with this lot line adjustment. The existing parcel is five point five five seven. I'm guessing, uh, you're suggesting is, is greater than half of an acre.
I see what you're saying. Okay.
So ma- maybe, I, I mean, if there were comments, great, great, but I mean, maybe the, maybe what we could do is. Sort, you know, start the process for the, well, do you think you would reconfigure this plan? In which case, we wouldn't want to circulate anything, right?
Yeah, I think we'd want to take, you know, um. Take a look at it and have, have a discussion with the clients about this before we do any circulation, Paul.
Okay.
And I, I think meeting with, uh, with the zoning officer. And discuss the plan with him a little bit. Uh, before, you know, we start going ahead with, uh, escrows and this and that. Uh, until you, you get this firm where we can go, I'm sure this can be worked out. Uh, there's enough land and whatever to, to work it out.
We have escrow. We have escrow going back, um, for the town engineer. Art.
Alright. That's good.
And, and, and not to, certainly not to waste the board's time, but. Arlene, how, how to, is it, is it a, a direct meeting with the zoning administrator? Is it a Zoom meeting with the zoning?
Zoom, Zoom.
Zoom, okay.
I mean, I, I, if I could help, I could be part of that if you want to.
That'd be great, Paul.
That'd be great.
Yes.
Then we, it's, it's so that he's doing them by Zoom? Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
And Arlene, how do we schedule that?
We gotta set up a meeting. We gotta, I, I gotta set up a Zoom.
Yeah, how do we schedule that?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna coordinate his, uh, time, your time, Paul, you know.
Okay. All right, so, so we'll, we'll go back and we'll, we'll talk to our clients and then. And then we'll reach out to, uh, to, uh, Paul and Arlene. Uh, to, uh, to schedule a time with the zoning administrator to discuss this.
That sounds, that sounds good. I think that's the logical way to go. We don't, this way, we don't have to make too many changes. And, and, uh, spend a lot of extra time.
Okay.
Okay?
Great.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I send you the revised agenda, Art.
I'm sorry, Arlene, I have a tough time understanding you. I'm not getting you.
I send you the revised agenda.
Oh, yes.
We have the, um, discussion.
Yes. Yeah, why don't we, uh? We've still got everybody here. Why don't we, uh? Talk about that. Uh, I'm, uh, slightly confused. I don't see why, I, I don't quite understand why we have to. Change procedures on this thing, but, uh. Paul, you're kind of heading this thing?
Yes.
Justin. Justin.
So my understanding is that, right, that we did the Charles subdivision at the last meeting. This is the, um. It was on two sides of the road and we had them put in a illustrative location for a possible house. And a location for a possible driveway. They went to file that with the Duchess County Board of Health. Who said that they cannot file it with those locations because they're not approved. Right? And they weren't seeking approval for them. We just asked to be shown that a possible location exists. So they have come back and said, can we amend our resolution to permit them to. Delete those illustrative locations to file a clean map, right? That shows the existing house and an empty parcel, right? That's what they're asking for. That's what it is. That's what they'd like to file, but we approved a map with a fake house and a fake driveway on it.
Can I say something, Art? So basically, Department of Health, I spoke with the Department of Health today. So because it's not Board of Health approved yet, because the building envelope is not really. It's theoretical. It's not like the other subdivision that there's a septic, there's everything that's, um, leach filled and everything. This one doesn't have it. They are just putting that location. Department of Health doesn't want to sign off on anything. That is theoretical. So it's considered non-realty subdivision. If we remove the building envelope. They will sign up on it and it's a non-realty.
If they, if we remove the building envelope. So that it's, uh, one lot has got a house on it already, the other lot has, uh, nothing.
It's a non-realty subdivision.
But don't we, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, folks, but don't we have to, to, we approve a lot? Uh, a subdivision, don't we have to have a, uh, a driveway and a building envelope?
No, what, what we told that, right, they, because they have no plans to build, right? We didn't approve any kind of building. They just wanted to divide it into raw land. And what we told them is if you want to divide it into raw land. You have to show us that it is a potentially buildable lot in the future. So there has to be some driveway and some building. The Board of Health is saying if they put those fake building and driveway on there, it could be construed. As an approval, which they're not giving, right? We just wanted to see that it was possible. They showed us it was possible, right? They spent a lot of money to show us it was possible, but at the end of the day, all they want is a vacant piece of land.
Okay, do we have, uh? Any comments from, uh? From anybody on this?
Paul, what's your take on it?
Yeah, I, I think with Justin, I mean, it, it, it's frustrating because the, the stamp that they signed says there's no approval sought nor given. And it's on the map, so there's, you know. It's a little bit of overkill, but I, I don't think there's any harm in it. It's exactly, these, these were just theoretical locations. They weren't mandated, so. Taking them off doesn't hurt anything and if it's the way they can get it signed, I think we should just do it.
Well, how about the driveway situation?
Well, they, the, Justin, they said they're gonna leave the, the little cut in there. They just can't have the whole. I don't know why they can't put the driveway, but anyway, they can leave the cut, but they can't put the rest of it.
Right, so you, you would see the entrance, right? You'd see the theoretical entrance.
Okay. Well, then that, I guess that would make sense then. Uh, what does everybody feel about that?
I'm fine with it because I think we did that just to prove to ourselves it would work. I think that's right.
Yeah.
How about everybody else?
I, it makes sense, I mean.
Okay.
Do we, do we then keep our required map on file? So if anybody ever comes back looking for. Um, gee, you know, how did this lot get created when you can't build here and we would say, oh, but we knew they could because here we have this. Is that something we save?
That's a really good question.
Yeah.
I think Arlene has every piece of paper that's ever crossed our desks.
I think, I was thinking about that. I was thinking, sorry, I was just thinking about that. I mean, we have Chazen's representation that you can build a driveway and you can build a house. So, I, and I think we should keep them.
Yeah, I was gonna say, like, so down the road, you know, four owners from now, when somebody tries to build and, and we're all long gone off the board. Somebody can go, well, why did we create this lot? And, you know, where, where you couldn't build. It's like, oh, wait, yes, we were told you could.
Well, that is not really that, those building envelope, that's not Board of Health approved. You gotta remember. The Department of Health will, the one will approve where the septic, where the well and everything. So that's just theoretical on the core, uh, on the part of the surveyor. That's not really.
Yeah, but we, but they represented, they represented to us in a drawing and, and verbally. And in writing that it was buildable. So I think we were covered to Sarah's point, right?
I just want to say, do we keep that documentation?
Yeah.
That, like, you know, is there a big fat ass cover letter that says? You know, we approved this because we were told by Chazen it is buildable. As opposed to someone having to dig for it.
I think if Jason is willing to certify that that is buildable, that portion, I mean.
They already did.
They already did, yeah. I, I would, I would suggest. Putting, like, doing another motion now to do it and just restate, right, I think our earlier motion that. We approved this on January fifth. We saw a map. We had Chazen come in. They confirmed there was a buildable space for a house. There was a buildable space for a driveway. We approved it on those grounds. We're now, you know, approving their request to remove the illustrative locations of the house. And the driveway to, in order for them to file it with the Board of Health, right?
Yeah, for the purpose of filing, just for, for the purpose of filing, this, filing, this way, those building, building envelope i- is still good. You know what I'm saying? Like, they're gonna file the map to the county. That filed map is gonna be, uh, is gonna be there for, for years, forever. So, but the one with the building envelope, I'm gonna have that copy. That's not gonna be on the county. That's not gonna be on the record, but we could put a reference to it.
Okay.
Just include it on your resolution. This way, ten years from now, twenty years from now, we're all not here. They know where to dig.
How's that sound?
Fine.
Okay, so, can you do, uh, Justin, could you do another then, addendum to that resolution?
I, I think we can just do a quick resolution right now.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm gonna wing it, but you know, go with me. I'll, I'll make it sound nice, but like, whereas on January fifth, twenty twenty one, the planning board. Approved a resolution granting preliminary plan approval and conditional final plan approval in the matter of the Charles subdivision. Whereas the planning board reviewed and approved a map that showed, um, a. Buildable location for a house and a feasible location for a driveway, which locations were confirmed by Chazen. Uh, now therefore, uh, uh, I'd say, and whereas the, the Duchess County Board of Health. Um, has requested that the applicants remove the illustrative locations for the house and driveway from the map to be filed. Therefore, the planning board hereby grants approval for the Charles applicants to remove the illustrative locations of the possible house and driveway sites. Um, from the map in order to conform with the Duchess County Board of Health request. Second.
Discussion?
Do you want to simplify it? It's just to amend the motion that we approved before to, uh, remove the building envelope and driveway on the filed map. For filing purposes and the rest remains the same.
I'm a lawyer. I don't want to simplify anything.
Your legal verbiage.
It is mine.
Why use words when I can write three paragraphs?
I like, I like the second one because it's a separate situation. I mean, I don't want to go back.
Well, this way, it is this way. It's the, the, the both resolution is good, you know, the other one is just amendment for filing. But you could just recraft it later, Justin, with your legal verbiage.
I think I just did a great job.
I agree.
Fine, frankly.
You did great.
Hey, any more discussion? All in favor? Art, I.
Jack, I.
Tracy, I.
Sarah, I.
Paul, I.
Okay, so moved. Okay. Okay, we have, uh, we have an announcement to make. And, uh. Our, uh, longest member, well, I guess, uh.
Love you.
Elf and, uh. And the young lady there who is leaving us. We've been here eighteen years now, so, um.
Yeah, long time.
Long time.
That's, I think, I think your community service, you've earned your badge.
You're not kidding.
Yeah, and then some.
We have been through the wars, right, state?
Yep.
But she has, uh, graciously said she would stay on for a while until we get somebody else. And I hope we can do that quickly. Uh, if anybody has any, uh, people who are interested, uh.
Females. Oops, sorry.
Let. Uh, let them know that they've got to contact the, uh, uh, I guess Ray Oberly, right, uh, Arlene?
Yes. Yes.
I have somebody and if anybody else has got folks that are interested, uh. You know, explain to them what's entailed. Um, and.
Maybe don't.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, don't lie to them, actually, is what you have to do.
Tracy did a great job of that with me.
So, uh. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You have, you have been a, a rock on the board. Through many, we've gone through a lot of people, haven't we?
Especially seeing that Coyote Ridge map.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, the Bot Ball.
You remember going up there with Elliot?
Bot Ball.
It was like our first, our first.
Remember when he did the explosion over there?
Yeah, and that was, uh, the original owner of that, this, uh, guy named Bot Ball, who was really a character.
Lived next door to me, yeah.
Wound up, uh, just devastating that ridge up there. He clear cut it. And, but we did get him. He had to replant, so, because half of it was rolling down to somebody's farm, so.
Atrians, right? It was, was rolling down to the Atrians farm.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, okay, uh, is, uh, does anybody else have anything or is Dean here?
No, Dean.
No, Dean.
Hey, I have the minutes.
Yes, uh, the minutes of the fifteenth, December fifteenth. Does anybody got a motion? Jerry, you're the best at this.
Gary.
Got the minutes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, um, the, yes.
We got a motion on the floor, Arlene. Let me finish this. Okay, uh. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, discussion. All in favor? Art, I.
Justin, I. Jack, I.
Alright.
I, Sarah, I.
So moved. Okay, Arlene.
Reminder about your training hours. Four hours of. So there are, um, like the virtual via Zoom, so you could do like, um, Sarah did. Sarah did already her four hours this year.
Not this year. I have, I did, I did, well, that's right, because they carry on.
Because carry on from last year.
I did my, I did mine.
I did mine.
Yeah, Jerry did, Paul, Jack and Justin. And Art.
I have not done mine.
Me either.
You're gonna get fired, so you better do yours.
Oh, my God, that broke my heart.
That's what they said. I was like, I was like, this sounds like, are you, what are you gonna do? You're gonna fire all the town, I mean, the, the planning board?
Ar- Arlene. Arlene, when you get a chance, and there is no rush in my mind, could you just send me an email with? The list of places that I, you know, what one does to sign up for the training?
Sure, sure. I thought they normally send it to you. Jerry gets it, Paul gets it, you don't get it.
I don't get nothing. I'm trying to sign up for that vaccine. I'm not getting any of that either, so this is part of the course.
Okay. Okay, thank you, everybody. Uh, nice job tonight. Um, do we have a motion to?
Don't you go, Jerry.
Give me a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor? I, I, thank you.